You go. Okay. All righty. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna bring our meeting to order. Thank you so much for coming tonight. At this time, Ms. Ray, would you call the role of counsel?
The Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Alex Heath.
Present.
Honorable Linda J. Davis.
Present.
The Honorable Samantha Hudson.
Present.
The Honorable Hattie Portis Jones.
Present.
And the Honorable Ulysses J. Smallwood.
Absent.
Is absent. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay. Mr. Frazier here today. Is she in here? Mr. Frazier, okay. At this time, if we all can stand. Mr. City Administrator, could you do a prayer for him, ma'am?
Absolutely. Let us pray. Father, we stand before you this evening with our heads bowed and our hearts humbled, grateful for the blessing of this and another day. Lord, as we gather to conduct the business of the city of Fairburn, we ask that all that is said and done here is above all pleasing and acceptable in your sight. Father, we pray for a spirit of collaboration and cooperation, that all of our efforts serve the citizens that we are obligated to provide for. Bless all of our first responders. Hope them to be safe in all that they do in protecting our community. Bless our leaders, that you guide them with wisdom and good judgment. Bless all of us to be responsible citizens. It's in your son's name we pray, as every heart that agreed said. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this ti- at this time, I'll ask members of council, would you come down with me as we have a presentation, actually two presentations? If you can come out front.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
We're gonna go ahead and make this quick, 'cause I'm long-winded now. I'll talk. To the mayor and council, our city administrator, assistant city administrator. Today, we're here to honor our promoted lieutenant and sergeants. These individuals have taken a rigorous course, training, studying, to fulfill their duties and to become newly promoted lieutenant and sergeants. So as I call your name up, I want you to come up front and receive your promotional helmet. First one is firefighter Kamari Ray. Thank you. That's why I got them to bag me up. He's promoted to sergeant, so I'll clean that up right quick. Next individual, from the rank of firefighter, promoted to the rank of sergeant, Joseph Falco. From the position of firefighter to the rank of sergeant, Kyle Marshall. From the rank of firefighter to the position of sergeant, Jayden Watson. From the position of firefighter to the rank of sergeant, Ernest Ferguson. From the position of firefighter to the rank of sergeant, Rohan Dukes. From the position of firefighter to the rank of sergeant, Terrence Carter. From the position of firefighter to the rank of sergeant, Paris Evans. Last but not least, from the rank of sergeant to the rank of lieutenant, Lieutenant Reggie Pierre. Gentlemen, I wanna let you all know, I'm very proud of you. Look forward to you all growing in your positions. And thank you, as always. To the mayor and council, thank you for all the support, for years of support with the fire department. Thank you so much, Mr. Phillips, Ms. Chris, as always. Mayor, you like?
Ask the city administrator, before I come up, would you just give a few words? Because what you've seen here today is a team here and out. Talk about that in my comments. Ms. Chris, would you come?
Good evening. To all of you loved ones and family members here, you have every right to be proud. They have earned these promotions. And I also want all of you who are residents of Fairburn to know that you have one of the finest fire departments anywhere. Anyway. And I want you to know, those aren't just empty compliments. Fire departments are assessed from A to Z, everything from fire safety to life safety to everything they do. And the highest rating for a fire department is an ISO 1 rating. Your fire department is the only one in this region with an ISO 1 rating. That is due to Chief Robinson and his fine command staff. I don't have time to name all of them. And all of these dedicated men and women who put their lives on the line for us. They deserve your applause and they deserve your respect. I could not be more honored to work with a fire department like the one we have in Fairburn.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I don't know how I go behind that. But thank you, thank you, family and friends. Because I know the job they do, they cannot do it without your support. And I wanna say to our newly promoted sergeants and lieutenant, job well done. It's not over. It's just the beginning to the next step in your career. So thank you for your service.
Let me just say, ladies and gentlemen, this has been a long road. The city of Fairburn Fire Department has come from one extreme to the next in just four years. Upon my arrival in my inaugural address, I'm not saying anything I hadn't already said publicly, four years ago upon my arrival, had one truck working that was half-working. Totally abomination. And I vowed, when I got sworn in, I had a conversation with Chief Robinson thirty days before I got sworn in. And I said, "Chief, being an Atlanta native and having seen it fire departments all my life, my father was an Atlanta firefighter." So I got a chance to see police and fire departments from another whole perspective. One of the things I vowed to him, as well as the chief of police, I said, "In three years, if I say, if God's willing, two and a half to three years, I saw agency out of nineteen thousand cities in the country and five hundred thirty-five in the city of Fairburn, we will end up with a rating," and he'll tell you, I said this very very, "we will acquire a rating that most agencies can only dream of." And that is what we've done. And so it- A lot of decisions were made. We spent money. That other mayors have told me point-blank, "How in the world do you figure you're gonna acquire that type?" I think we've acquired, what, ten pieces of equipment, ten fire trucks? And right now, to show you, just to show you the level of glory that the city of Fairburn has right now, I went to homecoming this weekend at Morris Brown College. Totally to my surprise, our fire trucks are actually right in the parade. Then only to find out, over in College Park, had a great event in the city of College Park. I wish I could've went, but I was at Morris Brown all day. And so, again, our agency was talked about. For those of you that don't believe that fire departments are rated one of the toughest agencies in the world, because here's the question, ladies and gentlemen. When I came back as mayor, I made a clear decision. I said, "Guys, having grown up with a firefighter in my home," I made it real clear. People don't ask, "Is your fire department going to come when they dial 91?" They, the question is, "How fast are they gonna get here?" The other part is, it's assumed automatically that they're truly due to prepare, worthy and well-qualified, and they've shown suitable proficiency in all areas of that department. That's what the city of Fairburn has done. And so, again, I take pride in this and our police department, because, again, for many of us, don't understand the value that the city of Fairburn's public safety as a whole. Our police department was ranked as the tenth safest city in ten months after my arrival. And how was we able to do that? Because I demanded collaboration between public safety and every department. Again, do we get it all right? Absolutely not. But this is the validation of men and women that we believe understand the value of getting promoted also within. My position was simple to the city manager when I hired him. I want men and women to get training, because I need men and women that go beyond the call of duty, get a fair evaluation, to have a chance to actually get to excel in this agency, which is what you're seeing today. And so I say to you, congratulations, because you're a part of an agency that's made a mark in the city of Fairburn that'll never be erased. As I close, what needs to be said, ladies and gentlemen, members of council and I don't always see eye to eye. That's no secret. Okay? But the one thing I can say that I concur, those council members that pack palling, the former council member and those that have served with us, this is a culmination of members of council that have served with us and that understood the value of working and moving forward in spite of our differences. Okay? This is a very validation of that. One other thing, too, I wanna say, and my wife is watching, so she won't be surprised that I bring this up. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you that missed the Fairburn Fall Festival, okay? If you didn't see, one of the things that was talked by all five, I invited all ten candidates of governor. Five of the ten showed up and came to the parade. But here's the part that I was proud of the most. They talked about your fire department, your police department. Actually, the question was asked, "Did I invite every police agency in the state?" I tried. And so the goal was simply, the thing that I was the most proud of is because the fire department was talked about, about the various fire trucks. The other mayors would ask me point-blank, "Do you and your council was able to come to an agreement to acquire that type of funding?" Absolutely, yes. As I take my seat, I think I've closed five times already. I just wanna say to Chief Robinson and administration and all the other department here, they don't do it by themselves. It's all the department here that come together as one for you to see what you're seeing today. And so, again, with that being said, thank you, congratulations again.
Man, I just have to say something else. With the support of you and the council, Mr. Phillips, Ms. Chris, citizens, we had an audit about two months ago. And they went through our whole fire department, from training to equipment. And the auditors said they had never seen a department to have such excellent ratings in his years of doing it. He's, he said he'd been doing it about sixteen years. And ladies and gentlemen, that's why we're ISO number one. With the support of mayor and council. With the support of mayor and council, our city administration, and the citizens. That's what got us there. Thank you. Congratulations, man. Yes, congratulations, congratulations. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations. Congratulations, man. Congratulations, man. All right, be careful, Falco. Congratulations.
That's been opened. That's Hattie Portis Jones here. You can have that one.
If everyone just hold on for a minute, we have a, go ahead. Okay. Need to stay.
First, I'm gonna let everybody exit the room.
Join me over. That's good to see you. How are you? Good evening. How you doing?
Nice to meet you.
That turn, are y'all getting cold?
Yeah. I'll find out.
She is. Oh, yeah, 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 she is. Yeah, she's on fire department staff, yeah. So you got fire department out the way. About to do a, or where's your thing?
The second presentation is a Unity and Community Ward from Apostle J. Jones, Community of the National Day of Prayer.
Thank you for allowing us to participate in your council meeting today. The Bible tells us we should know those who we labor among. And we've really been laboring with Mayor Avery for quite a number of years. It was twenty-six years ago when our honorable, our beloved honorable, late, our beloved late honorable Mayor Hannah asked our church, hands of praise, international ministry, "Will we do something that Abraham Lincoln instituted in the country, what she could not get anyone else to do in the city of Fairburn?" No ministry, no pastor, no one. And we had just started our ministry maybe about a year and a half or so. And we were just so naive, we said, "Sure." Had no idea what tag we had by the tail. We had our first meeting here in the chamber at twelve noon. And it was just my wife and Chrissy was a baby. She's twenty-eight years old now, Dr. Chrissy Jones. And we was right here in this chamber, and we had one or two council members. And so we started National Day of Prayer. And it really blessed our city tremendously to be where we are right now. I remember we had a fire department. And I remember the tall fireman over there, he was lieutenant, sergeant or something. I always go by and tell him, "I'm praying for you." He said, "I thank you, Pastor Jones." Okay? Now you see what God has done, amen? That's awesome, amen? We have hosted National Day of Prayer for over twenty-six years in our community. And then we were elevated by Dr. Dotson out of Colorado Springs to host the Fulton County, South Fulton County National Day of Prayer. So we're the convenience for this whole territory now. Thanks to that assignment, and I thank God for both of those great people, God, amen? This year, we proudly recognize the overseer of the fifth runway for the city of Atlanta, the Atlanta Harshfield Contractor Compliance Manager, amen? In nineteen, in twenty oh nine, it became the year that we had our first black mayor in the city of Fairburn. And he's done a great job. And out of all those things that a mayor has to go through, amen? I see now why they say honorable mayor, amen? Amen, praise God. And the city of Fair, I mean, Georgia, the city of Fairburn, Georgia, enhance, saluted, to succeed our honorable mayor, Mario Avery. We proudly present to you- We proudly, proudly present to you the National Day of Prayer Award. We have given out, we have given out over, over 30 of these awards. And, and I want you to know that, that you're not the least, definitely not the last. But you, we've been watching you and it's not just me and my daughter, Dr. Jones, I mean, uh, Bishop Lyke and several other people. Mayor Hannah was a recipient, but she was, she became a recipient after her term as mayor. Mayor Avery's the first sitting mayor to receive his honor, amen?
Uh, again, thank you so much, again, uh, this caught me by surprise as well. Uh, let me just say again, ladies and gentlemen, uh, a lot of what we've been able to do, and I don't talk in riddles, um, as relates to the pre, the prayers of the righteous avail much. Uh, the city of Fabrin is indicative of that very scripture. And I make it no secret that, uh, every organization, I see Ms. Honey here, cause she, she would tell you, she asked me a couple of times at our third Friday, I didn't hear you start with prayer. And so, uh, we try to pray with, uh, over every event and everything that we do. Does, does that mean, does that mean we get it right every time? Absolutely not. But what it does mean is that with the efforts and the vision and the goals that were set, uh, by this administration, both the, my previous eight years and the last four years, uh, definitely, uh, again, you just saw a, a manifestation of the prayers of the righteous action. And I, and I, I didn't mean it, even bring this up, but I'm in the spirit, so I'm, I'm gonna say it. The, the reason we know, and I'm, I'm so proud Pastor Jones about the National Day of Prayer, because again, I make it no secret, guys, again, I, I'm, I'm no see here to pretend to have, get everything right as, I make it no secret, me and several council members that you've seen the last two years that's going at it, uh, and so I make that no secret. I have my principles I like, but there's certain things that I just will not, will waver as it relates to standards. Uh, again, one of the things, again, prayer is a manifestation. Let me give you a confirmation of it. And again, whether, regardless of where you stand in your faith, uh, this past Fabrin Festival showed me that prayer works. And I'll tell you why. That Friday night, and again, I never expected to even say this publicly, that Friday night, me and my wife, after I took out on a date night that Friday about nine o'clock, came back to Fabrin and we walked these whole grounds here and down at the campus. And my prayer was simple, Lord, would you ensure that the men and women that come here, whether they are parade participants and whether they are resident, whether they have business, whatever, would you sure, ensure that they leave this place better than they arrived? And based on, from all indications right now, from all the mayors and the other people, the thing they talked about was the culture and the positivity during that event. Uh, again, does that mean we get it all right? Absolutely not. But again, the prayers of the righteous avail much and it manifested that day. And I just believe until my term ends December 31 at midnight, I'm, I'm hoping that it gets right up between then and then. So with that being said, let me again, thank the members of council, uh, that have agreed with our agenda, uh, many haven't. And I would make, I don't think that's no secret. But for those members of council that have, thank you so much because I couldn't, no man is an island, no woman is an island. And so I thank the members of council and our staff for being able to manifest what you see has happened in the city of Fabrin. Thank you. At this, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, we have our public comment, excuse me, I'm sorry. We have the adoption of the city council agenda.
Mayor, we need to amend the agenda to expand number nine to number nine A and nine B. This is an emergency amendment to the executive session because a lawsuit was recently filed. Samantha Hudson versus the Ethics Board. Suit number 25 CV013958. Can we get a motion to amend the agenda? So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries. At this point, we'll come to our public comment. 30 minutes will, shall be available for public comment. Each speaker shall be limited three, three minutes. However, a speaker may transfer his or her three minutes to another speaker, but no speaker shall be permitted to speak for more than six. Further in event, if you have more than 10 speakers, how many speakers do I have?
We have 11 speakers.
We have 11 speakers, so at this point, I have the two-minute intervals, two minutes, uh, versus three. No speaker shall speak for more than four minutes. Issues raised at this time are generally referred to, to the city administrator for review. Responses will be provided at a later date. Would you go ahead and call our first speaker?
Mayor, hold on one moment.
Mayor, uh, we, you added, the council voted to add that agenda item to the agenda. Now you need to formally adopt the agenda.
Oh, I apologize, yeah. Members of council, can I, we've now added to the agenda, can I entertain a motion to adopt the, the amended agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries.
The first speaker is Samuel Perry.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor Avery, uh, city council.
Good afternoon.
Most importantly, the city staff. Uh, my name is Samuel Perry. Been a resident of Fabrin for almost 28 years. Um, although I've attended a, a few of the Fabrin Festival and Parade Events in the past, I, I really want to say that, uh, the one that we had two weeks ago, I believe that that was the best one yet. Um, I, I had some prepared notes, but I'm just gonna, just, just read and just say what I want to say. Uh, to, to all the city staff, those that's, uh, the city workers as well, those that seen and unseen, the ones that are prepared to make sure that it was a safe event, and the ones that cleaned it up after it was to return our city to its glory, I just want to say thank you. Um, the, the, the positive views that we received, uh, on national television, national media, social media, um, it's just, uh, I, I guess the only word is just, it was just so overwhelming to me to see the, the growth that Fabrin continues to have. And I, I just wanted to say thank you, that's all.
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
The second speaker is James Whitmore.
Mr. Whitmore.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening, sir.
My name is James Whitmore, 25 Somerset Hills, here in the great city of Fabrin. I just wanted to come up and just, uh, a couple of things I just wanted to add. Uh, the fire department, that was a beautiful display, uh, looking at the promotions after they completed their line of study. That was a great thing. I'm very happy about that. The unity award, I received it last year, mayor, and you was there and I was surprised by that.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, to have it being presented again tonight here in the city is another beautiful thing.
Yes, sir.
One thing I wanted to mention is whistleblower policy that I see that is on the agenda tonight. I've been talking about that for about a year and a half. And I just want to thank you, Mr. Phillips, and I just want to thank you, Mr. Attorney, because now we finally have it. Now, we understand that the state has a whistleblower policy. Now, I didn't read the meat of it, cause I'm, I'm not sitting up on the dais anymore. I'm hoping that that meat, it mirrors what the state has as well, so we shouldn't have any, any issues whatsoever. I know we had personnel that had left versus using a whistleblower. But now we have, we're gonna have something in place as long as this mayor and council approves it. And we're gonna have officially, uh, put a whistleblower in place, and I'm thankful for that. The other thing I'd like to say is the, uh, Fabrin Festival, it was a great time. Uh, everyone that participated in my area, uh, they really enjoyed it. Latino, black, white, we just had a great time. I'm not gonna say, well, the youngest one was probably about seven, and I won't say what the oldest one was. I'll just say I'm the oldest one at 66, but there was someone older than me. But they all commented about what a great time they had, and, uh, I enjoyed myself as well.
Thank you, sir.
Running back and forth, I was quite tired, but we made it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Ernie Brooks.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As a gardener, I'd like to, uh, spread some seeds tonight of awareness. And, uh, the first thing I want to share with you is that I've always believed in progressive discipline. You know, uh, you have an infraction, you get a verbal warning, written warning, second written warning, a day in the street, three days in the street, five days, then you're terminated. To, uh, go for the throat, so to speak, um, in my opinion, if there's some type of whisper campaign for a character assassination, it's unbecoming of, uh, all of us. But the second thing I want to bring up is the land bank that's been created by the, uh, Economic Authority, Economic Development Authority. Ain't got a problem with it. However, uh, the way, uh, the contract reads to acquire the bank at 25 West Broad Street is there's no third-party beneficiaries. Here's my concern. The downtown and the Fabrin Economic Development Authority gets a kickback, so to speak. They get a slice of the pie when they, uh, move some bonds, some revenue bonds. Therefore, they create money, they're gonna approach the city to pitch in and buy the bank. All these old buildings have asbestos. If you don't disturb it, there's no problem. But when you do disturb it, then you, uh, create a, uh, public safety hazard. You create personal safety hazards for the workers. And my understanding, the contractor says there's, the city's gonna provide in-kind assistance. Meaning if you can't get a contractor to come in and do some work, we're gonna have city employees working on these, uh, properties that we acquire down the road. Um, so, uh, you know, it just seems if, if the city is gonna go into the general fund and put money to match it to buy property so that we can move forward, forward with the LCI eight-way plan and the comp plan, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Shirley Perry. Shirley Perry.
Okay.
Okay.
Next speaker.
Joe Low. Mr. Joe Low. Okay. Ms. Rose Low. Okay.
We just signed it.
They just signed it, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Vera Ragland.
Vera Ragland, 593 Search Halls Drive. I really do agree that Fabrin has made a lot of progress and there's a good staff and a good team from every department. Starting in June, the Search Halls in Pinehurst Drive neighborhood came together with the planning and zoning and corrected the rental property next to me at 603 Search Halls. And everything has been done in terms of maintenance and safety of the outside of the property. But one of the things that we listed in our letter and communications always with the city, even oral communication, was that there is a vicious dog. And the vicious dog is by definition of what Fabrin calls a vicious dog officially in your code and ordinance. And it says that that dog, or any vicious dog, is supposed to have a fee paid to the city, a tag. The fee is annual. There should be secure enclosed fencing of the yard. Cannot be in the yard without supervision. On October the 2nd, I was sitting on my porch, the vicious dog next door from that same rental property that is a problem, jumped on the porch, chased me into my house and tried to follow me through the front door. I was able to kick the front door closed. Now, this is not the only incident we've had with that dog and the records belong, although they are at the Fulton County Animal Control. In fact, the night that I talked to them, the young man said that he saw three other complaints there. Not just from me, there are other neighbors. On Pinehurst, one neighbor has been attacked by a pit bull. I want the city to go back and look at your ordinances, assign a dog officer. Make sure you follow through on investigation and making sure that these dogs are tagged, insured, surety, certificate. Otherwise, no good. It's very dangerous and the city is liable.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Peggy Moore.
I'm Peggy Moore, and I've lived in Fabrin for over 40 years.
Ma'am, can you pull the mic down and speak in it?
Okay. But anyway, I've been a resident for over 40 years. And I want to compliment the city before, most I was complaining come then, but, uh, I've had very, very fortunate not to need the fire department except for EMTs. And I will compliment them that they came out in the middle of the night and were always very courteous and... So anyway, and I think all of our services, utilities, uh, as a former employee for surrounding city, I think our services exceed anybody else's around. But what I'm about here is, uh, like with Vera Ragland, I live down the street and I happened to witness one instant, one incident with the dog. I had left to go to the bank and I needed something, and Vera was standing in her driveway. When I came back, I thought she was on her cell phone, but when I came back, she was in the same position. And I waved, but as I went by, I saw this pit bull. And he was not standing there barking, he was crouched, ready to spring on her. And so I, I, I didn't know, well, I went down. Excuse me, I've got a, uh, but anyway, I went down and turned around. And I didn't really know what to do, if I pulled in the driveway with the book, dog jumper or what. But anyway, lucky enough, somebody else had come and pulled in to help her. And I know this may be an animal control problem. And when I came back, there was four people from Animal Control dressed in all this gear. But I understand they did not take the dog in. And that's the part, this dog is dangerous. I mean, any dog that will just be in that position. And it may be animal control, but I think we need some assistance from the city too. So we appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Let's do it.
The next speaker is Homer Knight. Homer Knight.
Okay. All right. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Britia Wallace.
Ms. Wallace?
Ms. Wallace. Okay, Ms. Anitavia Benson, I know you're here.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening to everyone in the room. Um, this actually pertains to all of you. So as you know, um, I come up every single time and talk about the proposed development at 101 Durham Lake Parkway. Um, the last time that I spoke, there were other residents of Fabrin who said, not fair. We actually are opposed to this as well. And you're talking about a letter that's going out through your immediate community, but how can we take part? And so we have spoken to our attorneys and they have approved a letter that is available at the table at the entrance. Is also available, um, as you know, there are many running for city council and they have different forms of social media and email addresses, et cetera. They have a copy of this letter as well. So you don't have to just reach out to me or just reach out to the city, but to your, um, upcoming candidates for city council, you can reach out as well. This is what the letter looks like. I won't waste time in reading it, but if you are interested, you can go to any of our websites. Mine in particular is anitaviabenson.com. I know, uh, former councilman Whitmore has his web address that he has given before, Ryan Trotter. Same thing with, um, Shanita Nichols and others. Um, not to leave anyone out, forgive me if I have not stated your name, but I do know that everyone is pretty much standing in unity with this. So if you would like a copy of the letter, reach out to us, reach out to the city, and feel free to sign it, turn it in to any one of us, and we will make sure to present it at the upcoming planning and zoning meeting. Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the public speakers.
In this case, members of council, you have before you our city council minutes from this. Our city council meeting that actually commenced during September the 22nd, 2025. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Motion is made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
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 All oppose?
Aye.
That mo, that motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is number four, Curry Bend Final Plat. This is a request for mayor and council to approve the requested final plat for the Curry Bend Development.
Hold on one second, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The item before you is the final plat for the Curry Bend Development. This is a phased development, the... The applicant has sold portions of the project. In terms of the density and allowed uses, that has not changed, but the applicant is simply asking for approval of the final plat so that they can proceed. Their land disturbance permit, I believe, has been approved. There's still a lot of infrastructure and work that needs to be done before any homes will be built, but this is a request for the final plaque for the development phases. And the applicant is here and available to answer any questions.
Okay, you want to bring the item to the floor, or do you want to, you want to do a presentation on it? I mean?
Yes, and they are here in case you guys have any questions. At this point, there isn't a lot of details in terms of potential uses or what type of commercial development will be there or pictures of the homes, but the applicant can tell you more about sort of the development process.
Okay. Is he here?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cameron Heath with DRB Group, Georgia LLC, and address is 55 Ivan Allen Boulevard, Atlanta, Georgia. So, like Denise had mentioned, we are subdividing the residential portions away from the commercial portions and the assisted living PD zoned area. And Mr. Curry here is the developer for Bartow Properties LLC, so he will be doing the development for the commercial portion of the property. So, DRB bought the entire parcel. We have to give those pieces back to Mr. Curry, so that's why we're here to subdivide them out today. So, we have our land disturbance permit for the residential portion, and then Mr. Curry will pursue his land disturbance permit separately.
Got you. So, what I'm going to do, I'm going to bring the item, are you finished?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay. Members of council, I'm going to bring the item to the floor, and that way we can, you got any questions about it, we can go ahead and go from there. You have before you, members of council, a request for Mayor and Council to approve of the requested final plaque for the Curry Bend development. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion is made by Ms., Davis is second by Mr. Heath. Any questions or comment by council?
I just have a question.
I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am, I'll go ahead, Ms. Jones, and then I'll come to Ms. Hudson.
Yes, I want to, you stated that there were additional acquis, land acquisition that the developer had to acquire, no?
No, so DRB purchased the whole property. There is two acres or two parcels total, and we have to subdivide certain portions out according to the zoning, the planned development zoning.
To separate the commercial from the residential?
That's right.
And you stated, then, that you are having to give back to Mr. Curry what the residential properties that have been zoned?
The commercial portion.
The commercial portion.
DRB is a residential builder and developer, so we're keeping that portion. He is pursuing the commercial and the assisted living facility.
And could you state, what's the acreage for the assistant living facility?
I believe it's about two, 3.9 acres.
And the residential is how much?
Residential is about 65.
Acres?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, 65 acres and 3.5. Okay. And then, I recall when you guys came to us initially, there was discussion about green space and amenities for the, the community. Have you identified exactly where that's going to be or what is going to be? And also, could you answer the question about the conversations that you've had with the city regarding the property that the city owns? And we floated the idea of us working collaboratively to build that property because it's right in front of this Curry Bend project.
Yes. So, to address your first question about the amenities, all of the amenities that were required to build are outlined in the zoning conditions, but it's pool, cabana, playground, walking trail, and I believe dog park. But we're following the zoning conditions exactly as are outlined, and it will be part of phase one of the development. As far as the city building, we have completed, we had got approval from the city to go ahead and demolish that building. I believe the city was going to do that, hadn't secured the funding yet. We've been working very closely with Asbury Park on, you know, how to make the community better, better in general for everyone. They really wanted that building demolished and a new use in that area. So, we've completed our demolition application, submitted a lot of the road and the initial building demo requirements. I believe the next step is for the city to schedule a community meeting to enlist feedback from everyone before it happens, to give notice, and then to also get suggestions on what they want to do with that area. I haven't heard on the timing on that, but that's kind of where we're at in that process.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, we just recently got confirmation from the Asbury Park community on a date that worked with them, so that'll be probably in the next two weeks. We want to make sure that we give a sufficient amount of notice and also to some of the surrounding neighborhoods that may also be impacted, we want to invite them to the conversation as well. But we've reached out and had some preliminary conversation with the HOA leadership and any of the residents who've had questions, but we are planning a community meeting.
Any idea of when that might happen?
Probably in the next two weeks.
In the next two weeks?
Yes. We wanted to make sure that before we did any demo or anything like that, that we had that conversation with the community to figure out what those next steps are and what they want to see happen.
Okay, great. And then, last question. Is the Curry Bend project, will it be an HOA or POA? Is that part of the conversation?
Yes. We'll have a homeowners association to govern all of the open space and maintain everything.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Ms. Hudson, and then Ms. Davis.
Yes, these questions are for staff. Has the Planning and Zoning Commission verified that all conditions of preliminary approval have been satisfied?
Yes, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body in this instance. At this stage of the development process, they have completed all the requirements. Of course, there is a significant amount of work that still has to be done, but at this stage of the development, they have done everything that they're required to do. Now, before they actually start building homes, they will have to come back before you and present the infrastructure improvements, and that'll be reviewed by council.
Okay. Also, that was my next question. So, were the infrastructure impact studies completed specifically on traffic flow, utilities, and stormwater management before the recommendation was advanced?
The applicant has received the LDP approval, so civil plans have been that address a lot of those questions. But again, when the infrastructure is actually in place and city has an opportunity to go and inspect and ensure that everything is done per our codes, that item will be represented to you all so that we can make sure that any infrastructure improvements, any traffic, any of all those items are addressed, and that'll be presented to you all again before the applicant is allowed to do any construction of homes.
Thank you. Also, comment, thank you for the intended meeting with community, community engagement. You know, that's been a big focus here in Fairburn communities, want to be involved and want to be in the process of the new development. Last question, has the developer posted required bond or performance guarantee to ensure completion of public improvements, or is this something that's going to happen later on?
Are you referring to the bonds that are required for developers after the ASBILs are presented?
Yeah, just, just standard, you know, standard question, yes.
Typically, the bonds are presented prior to the, or with the submittal of the ASBILs, so they're not required to do that at this stage. There's an inspection that has to happen to make sure that any of the infrastructure that's been installed is done per our code, and that's not where we are in the development stage. But that is something that will ensure that before any homes are built or that item is presented to council, that all of those items are addressed.
Thank you for giving my tutorial, so I wasn't off record. Thank you so much. That's all I have for this item.
Ms. Davis?
Yes, I have just one question. Have we, we do have that 6% rental restriction in the HOA? Is that, I think I saw it on the, on the paperwork and stuff, I just wanted to.
So, we have the draft HOA documents yet, and that is in there. We haven't submitted them yet to the city for approval because that's done at the final plat process, so we will be incorporating that. We just haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Heath?
The only question I have is, what is the expected price range of these homes?
Townhomes are mid-3s to low 4s, and then the single-family homes are low 4s, low to mid 4s.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next item.
The next item is the City of Fairburn Personnel Policy Update. This is a request for Mayor and Council to approve an ordinance authorizing the amendment of Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Division 1, Section 2-57, Personnel Policy to Authorize Adoption of the City of Fairburn, Georgia Whistleblower Policy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
The item before you today is the newly created whistleblower policy. As you know, the policy came up as a recommendation from one of the finance audits maybe about a year ago. This policy was created because the city does recognize the need to encourage and enable employees to raise concerns in good faith without fear of retaliation or adverse employment action, which is in accordance with our federal and state law provisions. Quick highlights of the policy is that it does encourage employees to report potential wrongdoing, that would be fraud, waste, abuse, or illegal activities that could otherwise, might go undetected. The city does reflect the city's compliance as relates to any federal and state law. It does hope to continue to foster a safe and ethical work culture wherein our employees continue to still feel heard. It allows for the most critical element of the policy, which is protection from any type of retaliation, and it also allows for procedures for receiving and investigating reports of resolving concerns confidentially. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Members of council, is any of that, does this require a vote? It doesn't require, okay. In this case, let me bring the item to the floor. Members of council, you have before you a recommendation from the Personnel Policy Update. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made by Mr. Heath and second by Ms. Jones. Any questions by council?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, I have some questions.
Ms. Jones, and then Ms. Hudson, go ahead.
I just have one question. The, the comment that was raised by former Councilman Whitmore regarding our policy aligning with the state and federal, if applicable, does it?
It does. It complies with the Georgia Whistleblower Protection Act. This policy was created, was also fully vetted by our city attorney's office. It's fully compliant with federal and state law.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other, Ms. Hudson, you had a question?
Yes. Who will serve as the neutral investigator or hearing officer when whistleblower complaints involve executive or council members?
The personnel policy and procedure in this particular whistleblower policy is covering our city employees. If a council person was to come forward with some type of allegation of fraud or misuse, I would do what I would do with any other type of investigation. I would refer to our city attorney's office.
Okay. So, will this policy also apply retroactively to pending complaints or any prospectively?
Any policy that is brought before Mayor and Council, whether the policy is newly created, whether the policy is brand-new, is effective the effective date that the policy is approved by Mayor and Council.
The adoption of policy is always a good thing as we move forward, but what I would like to know is how will the city ensure that this policy applies equally to all employees? Meaning, how, what is the process of implementation, including department heads and appointed, appointed officials?
So, as noted in the policy, maybe around page three or four, it does indicate that my office will provide training to all levels, that is from our department directors down to our city employees, any newly elected officials. They receive training on the personnel policy as they are prior to them being sworn in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members of council got a question? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries.
The next item is number six, Act on Board of Ethics Recommendation to Impeach/Remove Samantha Hudson from Office by Five to One Vote.
Members of council, I'll just read the document, I'll, members of council, I'll read the document to the public record to be spread upon the minutes, and this is not item for vote. City of Fairburn, Georgia Preferal of Charges and Resolution. Preferable charges pursuant to the authority vested in the mayor by the charter of the City of Fairburn, Georgia, and consistent with Section 2-35 of the city's Code of Ethics, I, Mario B. Avery, hereby prefer charges of impeachment against Councilwoman Samantha Hudson for violation of the city's Code of Ethics as follows. Number one, violation cited. Section 2-35, paragraph C3, prohibited conduct. No city official shall disclose or otherwise use confidential information acquired by virtual his or her official position for his or her or another person's private gain. Section 2-35, C11, prohibited conduct. No city official shall make any disclosure of confidential information without the approval of the body on which the city official serves. Summary of findings. The City of Fairburn's Ethics Board duly appointed and convened under Section 2-35 of the City of Code of Ordinances has conducted a hearing regarding an ethics complaint filed by the mayor on August 11, 2025. Following the, following review and deliberations, the board has referred a charge of impeachment to the city council, finding sufficient cause to warrant further action pursuant to the city charter and ethics code. Action required. In accordance with the Ethics Board's referral, the city council is requested to formally receive the preferal of charges, spread the same upon the minutes of the council, and adopt a resolution setting the time, the date, and place for impeachment trial as required by law. Respectfully submitted, Mayor Mario Avery, Mayor Fairburn. Resolution, in this case, the resolution to set the time and date for impeachment trial of Councilwoman Hudson and for other purposes, whereas Section 2-35 of the City of Fairburn Code of Ordinances establishes ethical standards and procedures for elected officials, and whereas the mayor has formally preferred charges of impeachment against Councilwoman Samantha Hudson for alleged violation of Section 2-35, Section C3, and Section 2-35, Section C11, as detailed in the official complaint filed August 11, 2025, and whereas the appointed Ethics Board of the City of Fairburn has duly met, heard testimony, and referred a charge of impeachment to the city council for consideration, and whereas the city charter requires the city council to set a time and date for the impeachment trial upon receipt of the preferal charges and to ensure that the due process is afforded to the respondent elected official. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fairburn hereby acknowledges receipt of the mayor's referral of charges against Councilwoman Samantha Hudson. Number two, directs the same to be spread upon the official minutes of the meeting and set the impeachment trial date, which will be actually August, excuse me, October the 30th, Thursday, 2025, at 6:00 PM, to be held at the City of Fairburn City Council Chambers, 56 Malone Street, Fairburn, Georgia, or such a location as may be designated by the city council. Be it further resolved that notice of this sent impeachment trial shall be served upon Councilwoman Hudson in accordance with the charter and code of ordinances, and that the city attorney shall prepare and issue such notices as required, resolved this day of October, I want to make sure I've got the right day in the record, this day, the 13th day of October, 2025, approved, Mario B. Avery, Mayor of the City of Fairburn, adopted by the City Council of Fairburn, this 13th day of 2025. Members of council, is any members of council have a comment, and then we'll go, we'll talk about the executive session. Go ahead.
Comment?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Comment? All right. Good evening. I rise today to formally state that the action listed on this agenda as Act on Board of Ethics Recommendation to impeach or remove me as council from the Fairburn City Council is procedurally defective, legally unauthorized. is procedurally defective, legally unauthorized, and constitutionally impermissible. Neither the city charter nor the Georgia Constitution grants this council authority to impeach an elected member under OCGA thirty-six dash thirty dash six. A municipal council has no power to discipline, suspend, or remove one of its own members except as expressly provided by state law or through judicial process. Any attempt to do so here will represent an ultra virus act, meaning beyond the legal authority of this body. Further, the process utilized by the Ethics Board was fatally flawed. It failed to provide proper notice, service, and opportunity to be heard, all of which are protected under the Fourteenth Amendment Due Process Clause. Proceeding with this matter despite these deficiencies will expose each voting member and the City of Fairburn collectively to civil liability, including claims for violation of due process and abuse of authority. Constitutional law does not allow public officials to immunize themselves from accountability when acting outside the scope of their lawful authority. The attempt to convert an advisory ethics recommendation into an impeachment action is not only unlawful, it is misuse of process that undermines the very principle of representative government. For the record, I stand firmly on the law, on due process, and on the oath I took to uphold. Any further action taken in violation of these principles will be documented as evidence in ongoing and future legal proceedings. Furthermore, any action from this council to move forward with further actions against me has will open the city up to future lit litigation. Thank you.
Okay. Any other members of council?
Comments? This is our closing comments, right?
No, this is just regarding this item. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm good.
Yes, so I would ask that our city attorney prepare to respond to the statements of Councilwoman Hudson. We did not start this issue overnight. The proceedings that were implemented were guided by our charter, by our ethics ordinance, and by the state charter as well. And so to make allegations that we have not done that is false, but we need to respond to those allegations in writing, please, to specifically detail our process. And yes, Councilwoman Hudson, I believe, has already filed a lawsuit against the city. So the threat that she just read to us, that she's going to file a lawsuit, it's already filed. So let's, please provide us with a response to the statements and allegations that she is alleging that we are violating.
Absolutely.
Follow up. Follow up, please.
No, ma'am. The point of order, point of order. You've already spoke five minutes.
I am speaking with the city attorney.
You're point of order. Ten minutes on the subject, Mayor.
I am speaking with the city attorney and is asking him to respond.
You're out of order.
I still have the floor, Ms. Hudson.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Listen, you will be provided with a...
You speak into the mic, sir.
You will be provided with a detailed written response, but I respectfully submit, Councilwoman Hudson, that every process has been followed. A duly trained, significantly trained Ethics Board recommended impeachment. She's not been impeached. Impeachment has been recommended. This body, consistent with the city ordinance, Section Two sixty in particular, the mayor has preferred charges tonight. This panel, these members on this dais will vote to continue to prefer all the charges forward in an impeachment hearing. Should they vote to accept the prefer all the charges, will happen on October the thirtieth, and I submit, all process has been consistent with Section Two thirty-five of the ethics policy and Section Two sixty of the impeachment policy. And we will vigorously defend the very frivolous lawsuit that was just served. I accepted service a few minutes ago. Young man wanted to serve the mayor while he was on the dais, but I took the lawsuit, and we're going to defend it to the end. It's frivolous. So you can proceed.
One follow-up question?
Yes, ma'am. You still have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. You are using the word preferal, P R E F E R R A L. Could you explain what that word means?
That is an official accusation of misconduct or wrongdoing.
Is that a legal term?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you so much.
It's codified in, at Section Two, Two sixty. So it's not any language that the mayor made up. The city ordinance requires that charges be preferred, and that is, in fact, due process. You can't just say she's impeached. You start this process. She and her lawyer, quite frankly, were given appropriate notice. He didn't show up. She didn't show up. And so the Ethics Board did just what they decided as a body to do. They went forward with a case under all process.
Is it also true that all of the witnesses and participants of the hearing were legally subpoenaed?
Absolutely. I also will submit that the record, this isn't anything I'm making up. The record reflects that it was a vote of six oh. Six members of the ethics panel. There was only one that was not present, but he was sick. And even though he wasn't participating, he was sued. He was up in the hospital when this thing happened. He also was named in this frivolous lawsuit, even though he did not participate. And there was a five-one vote that she be impeached. Six oh that she committed a wrongdoing, and five one that she should be impeached. And so you don't decide impeachment tonight, to be real clear. There will be no decision about impeachment tonight. The decision tonight is whether this, you know, he preferred charges. There'll be a hearing, and she'll have ample due process. Hopefully, her and her lawyer will show up at the impeachment process, but it's going to happen.
One last question. Relative to that hearing, if this is appropriate to answer or not, will subpoenas be issued for participation at that hearing?
Subpoenas are not mandatory, but they could be issued by the impeachment council. Witnesses can voluntarily show up, or they can be subpoenaed. But I think the safest thing would be to subpoena all of the witnesses.
And subpoena is a legal term, process, and consequences associated with it if you do not respond to the subpoena?
Yes, and I submit, I want to be real clear, a subpoena is not required by law, but if and when a subpoena is issued, you have to comply with it. Because a witness can show up on his own accord without a subpoena. But if one receives a subpoena, he or she would need to show up and honor that subpoena. But again, it's not absolutely required that a witness be subpoenaed in order for a witness to show up.
Okay. And then just for clarification, you stated you've just been, you received on the mayor's behalf a lawsuit from Councilwoman Hudson and her attorney, and the lawsuit is against whom? Could you state specifically?
It's against the Ethics Board, Mayor Mario Avery, Horn, Jaworski-Horn, Rodney Anderson, Vera Ragland, Thomas Cochran, Anthony Smith, Delita Jones, and it purports to sue these individuals who have shown up on their own accord, volunteering. Her lawyer decided to sue them in their individual capacity.
And for the record, Ms. Hudson just stated in her statement that she will sue Mayor and Council if we proceed with a decision that...
If she follows through on that promise, that would be a third lawsuit.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
We're working on two right now, which is why we have an executive session tonight to talk about your strategy.
Okay, so two lawsuits. So what's the other one?
The first lawsuit was filed on September the twenty-second, and that lawsuit is against the City of Fairburn and our mayor and our city administrator in both their official and their individual capacity. Now, suing someone in their individual capacity, I've been practicing law since nineteen ninety-three. I'm very careful about deciding to sue someone in their individual capacity. But I submit to you respectfully, it too is a frivolous lawsuit. We're going to vigorously defend it, and we're going to countersue, if that's your pleasure.
All right. Thank you so much.
Ms. Ray, I want to make sure. I think Ms. Hudson has more time left. I want to make sure.
She does.
Yes, she does. I want to give her, how much time does she have left?
Five minutes?
No, she's got at least two minutes. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Dan. Stand corrected. Okay, Ms. Hudson, you had a response?
Yeah, I'm just going to ask the clerk to correct the record. Councilwoman Hudson never issued a threat about filing a lawsuit. Also to the clerk, the statement that was made, could you please make sure that it is written verbatim? Thank you.
And then I'll make the last statement. Members of the public, this is a recommendation of the Board of Ethics. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. I'm sorry.
Finish. Go ahead. I'm talking.
Thought you...
No, go ahead. Finish.
Okay. Members of the public, this is a recommendation of the Board of Ethics, made of the seven citizens selected by each one of us, sits on this dais. The recommendation was reviewed by the Ethics Board and overwhelming evidence of disrespect, failure to adhere to warnings by me as the mayor and the city attorney to cease and desist her harassment of the city clerk while placing confidential information on the internet. Ms. Hudson voluntarily refused to attend the hearing along with her attorney. She was granted three weeks via subpoena to prepare a defense that she didn't think was worthy to attend. Neither did her attorney. There will be an actual trial on Thursday, October the thirtieth. This date was changed from the twenty-eighth because of Mr. Smallwood's inability to be able to attend on the twenty-eighth. As such, a modification was made to adjust his conflict to the thirtieth. Ladies and gentlemen, in summary, the City of Fairburn's City Attorney's Office and Board has gone beyond the call of duty as a result of trying to create an atmosphere of cooperation. Unfortunately, this councilwoman was also censored by this body a few months ago. In our efforts to show the sincerity of our efforts to bring the compliance, bring this councilperson in compliance, she chose otherwise. I will say this much, ladies and gentlemen, again, after a councilperson has been censored and now recommended for, to be basically impeached, again, ladies and gentlemen, I have no way of knowing which way this body would vote. But ladies and gentlemen, we're at this stage because of efforts, blatant disregard for authority, no other way to put it. Just blatant disregard. Again, an opportunity was given for her and her attorney to defend themselves. Yes, I'm being, I'm being served with a subpoena, excuse me, a lawsuit. But again, I'm going to see exactly what I see it when Ms. Hudson first got on here. We're going to follow the rules and regulations whether you like it or not. That's just the bottom line. And again, I'll let the government system and I'll let the judicial system decide who's right. And so with that being said, can I entertain, members of council, I'm going to entertain in this...
Mayor, real quickly, Mayor, real quickly, just want to follow up. I am not of aware, or neither have I been provided or sent in a proceedings invited to subpoena with any censorship. Please, clerk, provide that for the record.
Okay. And so, members of council, I'm going to close the remarks. Ms. Hudson, since you're, I got the floor, go ahead. These are your closing remarks, and we'll go straight down the line.
You got to make a motion, ma'am.
Oh, oh, oh.
Preferred the charges. You got to make a motion.
Okay, so, okay, I thought we didn't take a vote. Okay, so we do...
You have to vote.
Got the, okay, in this case, in this case, can I entertain a motion for the preferred charges that was read?
Accept the prefer all the charges.
Accept the former charges.
Resolution setting the hearing date for October the thirtieth.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. What time?
Six o'clock in the evening. It says six o'clock on the resolution. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. At this time, I'll do closing remarks by council. Ms. Hudson, we'll start with you.
I want to give a huge shout out to our fire department for your service, your hard work, and your commitment. Wanted to definitely highlight the participation of some of our schools in the Fall Festival, and especially with our elementary students who participated. Definitely want to give a shout out to the staff because regardless, you always work hard, you always show up, and you're always presenting your best. So thank you for all that you do, and thank you for showing up every time. To Fairburn, my work will continue. I am not dismayed, and neither am I discouraged. We know what this is. This is a high-level smear campaign that has began January of twenty twenty-four when I took the dais to serve as your councilwoman. The biggest issue was, I raised questions. I asked questions, and I asked for information. And today, the information that I've asked for has still not been provided. So I thank you for your continued support, all of those who have reached out to me. Let you know that I am standing, and I'm still Fairburn strong, because I need you, and you need me, and together, we can move our city forward. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Okay, thank you. Please don't do that, okay? Next speaker, Mr. Heath.
No comment.
No comment. Ms. Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. To the citizens of Fairburn, I encourage you in the next coming weeks to be as diligent, astute, inquisitive, and engaged as you are during a rezoning request coming before this council. Your efforts in this regard will have an enormous impact on our city. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
Yes. I too want to shout out the staff and, quite frankly, all of the residents of Fairburn who has continuously supported the Fairburn Fall Festival. Mayor, this is your last one, and you did it big, and you did it right. And I have heard nothing but overwhelming positive comments about it. In the same vein, people were asking me, is it going to continue? Because they had heard conversations that it was going to be discontinued. And I wanted to assure them, whether I am on this dais or not, as a resident of this city, Fairburn has become known for its Fall Festival. It is one of the biggest community-wide events. And that is the one time of year where we do come together, and it is all about supporting each other at that event. And so we will continue. Does it need tweaking? Yes. Do we need to find alternative, additional resources to support it? Yes. But it can continue. And I also want to just shout out our fire department. I am not surprised at all. Never am I surprised. They continue to do it as well. But this is how Fairburn does it. The training, the resources that we provide to all of the staff for them to be their best, to do their best, because it is all on our behalf for us to be the best. So thank you.
Okay. And my final comments in this case. Again, as I've already mentioned, ladies and gentlemen, the Fairburn Festival, the part that, ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Jones just mentioned, that I'm the most proud of in this case, every age, every ethnicity, every religion affiliation was actually here in our city, and we put all that divide and conquer that some people want to bring in our city to side. We put it aside. The part I was, I was very proud of, I gave an invitation to all ten men and women that are running for governor, five of the ten. men and women that are running for governor. Five of the ten showed up. Again, but all ten got a, got an invite. The reason for that was my goal was, and for those that was there that morning, you hear, I talked about, again, that our city is now in the turn, literally, as a country is in a turn right now. And unfortunately, what happens, the lead, leadership matters, ladies and gentlemen, because what happens, so goes the head, so goes the body. In this case, again, you saw reflection of our governing body, again, on, at the Fairburn Festival, and how we decided to put differences aside, and actually, in this case, and present a one face, a one unified picture. I'm just, I'm, I'm just, again, I'm excited. I get hyped because I'm thinking about it. The impact of the men and women running for governor, all they could talk about, as I've spoke to every single one of them since then, is the level of cohesion that they saw that day. As Michael Thurman told me in particular, he said, this wasn't by accident. I watched, he said, he watched every operation, he in the county, man of Fulton County. So I watched every operation from the time I got here, seven o'clock in the morning, until he left. And so again, I want to thank every single one of the elected official mayors from everywhere that came. And again, mayors that are listening right now, again, as we talked about that morning, we're now in the turn. We've got to move our team in one direction, and that's what you've seen the city of Fairburn do on that day, and every day of this, of this administration. I want to say thank you, everyone as well. So with that being said, can I entertain a, a motion to go in executive session?
Pro move.
Second.
For a legal, in this case, legal personnel, which one? I want to make sure I'm using right one. Litigation and personnel matter?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
And real estate too. We have real estate litigation.
All three, in this case, the real estate, personnel, and matter. Litigation, real estate, and personnel. Entertainer motion.
So moved.
Okay. Linda, Linda made the motion second by Mr. Heath. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Real estate first.
Okay, we'll start with real estate first. But thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Have a great night.